For the burning ordinance July 11, 2016, 6:35 PM. I'm going to ask that Jody, Matt, Laura, John, Emmanuel, Deborah, Jerry, Aaron, Kate, Susan, and Susan Vander. To please stand and raise your right hand. Maybe you should stand as well. So I ask you all to please stand and raise your right hand and swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Thank you. And we'll start with Jody. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, Jody, before we go, I was gonna do, I'm gonna do quick roll call first.
Mr. Amendola?
Here.
Ms. Lassner?
Here.
Ms. Damit?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Lassner?
Here.
Ms. Amendola?
Here.
Mayor Bloom?
Solicitor Gladys?
Here.
Engineer Strunk?
And public affairs director, Director Kedrosk?
Here.
And then I would just like to remind the citizens that there will be three minutes for you to speak, whether you are in favor or not in favor. Would you have this little timer? We're going to speak solely on the ordinance that has been posted out there. Council will not engage or attempt to debate any of the comments from the citizens unless there are questions, and those questions will be directed through myself, the solicitor, or the borough manager. Our responsibility is to all of our citizens for a fair and compromising outcome, to put this ordinance into place, to punish those who violate the ordinance, and to benefit those who follow the ordinance. So now, Jody, we can start.
My name is Jody Horazowski. I live at 266 Double Y Avenue. I've been living there for 23 years, and my husband's aunt's been living there for 72 years. The problem is, we've encountered a neighbor that has brought this problem to light, I The house is 129 years old. We burn wood and coal all the time, just in the wintertime. And can I approach council real quickly?
Are we talking inside or outside?
Inside, for our house heating.
Thank you.
We keep magnets on our house, or on the furnace and the chimney every year, sometimes twice a year. And now, Mr. Phelps that lives on Union Avenue, unfortunately, has come to our house and bullied me, and my aunt, and my husband about us burning. He's also brought the borough ordinance officer to our house in his personal vehicle, for whatever reason. He's had the health department come to our house. The health department sat outside our house and watched the chimney, and then came to our door, told us why he was there, and he gave us suggestions, told us to burn coal at night, just to burn wood during the day. And then time goes on, and Mr. Phelps decides to come back to my house again and makes comments, and said he was calling the DEP, the Borough Ordinance, the Health Department. And I said, we said, "Go right ahead. You've already done it. They've already been here." So we called the police, then the two police officers from Crafton came to our house, took the report, and then they went over to Mr. Phelps' house, supposed to have gone over, according to what we understand, and has said they would talk to Mr. Phelps and told him not to come back on the premises again. We didn't receive any calls. We didn't receive anything from anybody. And Mr. Phelps lives about three four houses behind us, catamaran from our house. So he, I understand, made a comment in his YouTube, on YouTube at the Crafton meeting that he has asthma and emphysema. Well, I would like council to know, my two children, our two children, have asthma. They haven't had any problems with that. If it was, we would have stopped it. We'd just, if it was a problem, we would make sure. My husband even smoked. He quit smoking just because our kids had asthma. They have asthma. So I don't know where this is leading to, but I can just say this is our solely heating source of our house. I would like to just...
Sure. And you are in favor of this new ordinance allowing burning in your home if you're burning the appropriate items in your fireplace? Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
We have appropriate burning stuff in our house. We don't, and as I understand, he's tried to rally up neighbors that live three, four streets from our house. Said, "Oh, come." He's been making a big old thing out of it, making pot combust. And I think it should be addressed.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ashley Young, 266 Double L Avenue. I just wanted to say no. I felt like the new ordinance that you're trying to pass, you know, if somebody complains about you putting some kind of smoke in the air or smoke, they can find you, that's just not right. So I said no to the new ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Linda. Laura, I'm sorry, Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Stuhl. I live at 21 Hoghorn Avenue. I've lived in this area for 50 years, and I've never had a problem like this fire pit problem.
Are we talking outside?
Oh, outside, yes. Almost every one of my neighbors has a fire pit. They have a party, and it's no problem. You know, it's just like the music or lawn loyds. You just ignore it that night. I close my windows, whatever. But of course, we have one neighbor who's a root, using the privilege, she burns everything and anything all hours of the night, every Friday, Saturday, from eight to two, just because the neighbors were complaining. This spring, he burned pallets, bedroom furniture, hedges out of his front yard. The main problem is heavy smoke and lighting, burning bad smelling items, and lack of knowing how to burn. It's like, they need a lesson on how to burn. Why the whole neighborhood fills up with smoke, I have no idea. And I feel that this has opened up the floodgates for anybody to burn everything and anything. And then I'll get in county on my left, it's never been a problem. When this started, I'd circle outside and think my house was on fire. I called the Fire Department, 911, there's a fire. It was the kid burning five years ago when he first moved in. He burned all his bushes. Police came, said they left you start again. I get down to talk to him, put this figure on my face, says, "After you get off my property." I've tried to talk to him five or six times. Police have talked to him, they tell me he's belligerent, he's drunk. He sits there, walks away from them. He built a big one this year, but it's bigger than the county allows. I just think it's ridiculous. I've called the police, tried to deal with it. Topography comes in, to my case, my house is up high, it comes right in my second story window. I have COPDs that starts burning my eyes, my throat, all this stuff. I would like the ordinance defined as to the size, that they're allowed to use a pit with type of wood they're allowed to use, the guidelines, which are guidelines, not ordinance, from the county. I would like frequency and duration defined. I mean, this kid, is he allowed to burn every weekend? If so, should he have to get a permit? Should he have to take a course on how to burn? He's obviously not a boy scum. I just feel like our hands are tied on this. And I am obviously against it. Like I said, I have several neighbors who burn them all the time. It's not a problem. If you know how to burn, you don't get smoke everywhere.
So you're not technically against burning if you're following the rules?
Exactly.
If you're going outside of the rules, then you are against burning.
Exactly. Well, when a neighbor says to you, "I'm getting sick because your smokes come to my house, could you do something different?" And they just say, you know, quote, you know, whatever.
Okay.
And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, ready? There you go. Okay, we're ready for John.
My name is John Reschowski. I have two different items. First of all, I have a studio in Pittsburgh here in Crafton, been in business here for 40 years, and 12 properties in the borough, and all my property is up to code and all the taxes are paid. That leads me back to the Calabrese building that we have over here. It's been an eyesore here for three years. It's coming up in the first three years.
Hold on. We have to talk about ordinance for this meeting. I'm sorry. This is just the public hearing for the fire. But you can talk about that at the meeting at 7:15. If you want to talk about fire, we need to talk about that room. I'm sorry.
I have nothing to say about fire.
This is three minutes.
You just want to burn that.
No, you don't.
They burned the Calabrese building.
I'm sorry, John. Emmanuel.
John. What happened?
As far as we can get up now, right?
Am I reading this wrong? Emmanuel?
Emmanuel's with us on the alleyway behind 19 Noble Avenue.
Gotcha. Okay.
So he has to wait till seven o'clock.
Yes, okay. We'll move on then to Deborah.
Hi, my name is Deborah Vendolia, and I live at 37 Colter Street. And the reason why I'm here is, I just purchased this home, and I've been here on my third, going on my third year. Neighborhood's good, people are friendly. I lived in an apartment down the street, only moved up 165 feet up to the new place, so I know the people on the street. I'm familiar with it. Well, where I bought this home, I don't have a lot of yard. Everybody else has yards. Everybody else uses their burning, their charcoal grills and things like that. That's acceptable. Behind me, these individuals came up with an idea, let's bake big hole. Okay, the big hole started, then the bricks came. Now they're going around the block trying to find wood to burn in this open pit. So I let it slide because I happen to go on your website and see your new order amendment. I'm thinking, hallelujah, too bad, they started building it on July 4th. Well, we're close to 4th of July. Okay, I can see that theory. Second of all, yesterday, rather, this weekend, they had a birthday party. When the guests left, they started going with a hatchet and cutting trees, build a four-foot flame shooting over their yard into my house, and smoldering smoke all night long. And I think that this amendment needs to be passed immediately, because you are giving me an opportunity to go have the ordinance into effect, to go after these individuals, to bring it to their attention. Not everybody goes on your line. And when you do pass this amendment, I'm hoping that you send out little flyers, hello, you cannot burn garbage, weeds, clothing, you name it, it goes into an open pit. They do not put a screen on. So I want you to please consider passing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on then to Jerry.
I have to sit on because of my back. Can't come up to the mic.
Wait, let me start this.
Okay, you have a new amendment, a new ordinance plan. According to Allegheny County requirements, you either have to match it or succeed it to make it stricter to burn in our borough. And the three things that should be added is fires may be no longer larger than three foot wide, three foot long, and two foot high. Fires must be at least 15 feet from the nearest neighbor's property line, roadway, sidewalk, and also on a burning, is not prohibited day, when the air quality actions are high. And on your new ordinance, you list all the things that you're not allowed to burn in the chimneys or fire pits, but you don't say what you're allowed to burn. And talking to the EPA in Allegheny County, the only thing you're really allowed to burn is if you would go to Lowe's, they sell kiln dried firewood for outdoor chimneys and fire pits, $7 a bundle. So basically, you have to say what you're allowed to burn and what you're not allowed. Well, you do say what you're not allowed to burn, but you didn't have the option of what you are allowed to burn in there. And basically, what it comes down to, that's the only wood you should be burning it, because it burns clean, less smoke, the whole deal. I think there should be an age limit on fires. You should be at least 18 years of older. I think there should be an ordinance on the time you're allowed to burn. Nine to nine is for loud music and working around your house. Why would you have a fire ordinance that you can burn until the wee hours of morning? When why is there a fire being burnt that late anyways? And I think I might accomplish that. But I feel for the two ladies that just spoke, because they're going through the same thing I am. I have terrible allergies of trees, and when I inhale the particles from the smoke, I go into allergic reaction, which I have to use certain medications to control it. And it's something you just don't squirt up your nose, and 15 minutes later, everything's gone. You live with the allergy from being contaminated with the smoke for a good eight to 12 hours afterwards. But that's basically all I wanted to say.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Aaron.
Hi there, folks. My name is Aaron Boynton. I live on 1745 Bar Avenue. My neighbors. Everybody had really good points tonight. In particular, I was curious about your point where this be prohibitive if a neighbor did complain about burning in your wood stove. We do not have a wood stove yet.
We're talking internal?
Yes.
Okay.
But if a neighbor just didn't like the idea of that, they could force you to get on another grid, which, it's not a concern for us, but if we were to invest in having a wood fireplace put in, it's thousands of dollars. And then if a neighbor complained, be shut down.
Well, I'm not going to say that we shut down. No. As long as you're burning the appropriate substances in your...
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was parameters to that, as far as it just never been nuisance complaint.
Now, if you're burning your cabinets and crazy stuff in your...
I went through this just now, and I absolutely agree with all their parameters. EPA Air Action Day, I love that. That's something that's huge in Pittsburgh. We're terribly loaded as far as that's concerned. Complaints as far as neighbors, in my neighborhood, everybody has, you know, their little burn area, no flames are ever higher than two or three feet. I absolutely like that this gives guidelines to what you can burn. Kiln dried, I mean, you could state that, but there again, I'm going to chop my fire wood and make sure that it's during blink burning, so it would just be a matter of plain burning.
Right.
As far as the permit fees, I love living in Crafton, I pay income tax, and it's thousands of dollars to the federal government, and I almost feel bad that it's only a couple hundred to Crafton, because it's a great place to live. And I hope the permit fees are nominal, just to encourage people to get them and do it And I see that as an action, if it's revoked, to then be, your fire is illegal, you're no longer allowed to burn. But I hope that's a more nominal fee, just to encourage all the people. And if you benefit our local fire department, that'd be good.
Thank you.
All right, that's about all we have. Thank you.
How about Kate?
Hello. Hi. I also live at 1745 Bar Avenue, and considering burning is something that's already going on in Crafton, whether it's legal or not, I really like how everything is laid out in this draft, and just to put the parameters on it. So if people aren't being responsible, then you can't get penalized as long as you're being responsible. And if you are doing crazy things like burning cabinets, or oil, or whatever, then it puts parameters on people who are actually causing problems. And so, yeah, I'm pro burn, like, pro controlled burning.
Thank you. Miss Susan.
Let me hobble up to them if you can.
Oh, sad. My name is Susan Tegnaski.
Oh.
It's just not an easy reset, I'm sorry.
We're ready. All right, okay. You want to keep time, please, then. Take your key time. Okay.
Susan Tegnaski, I live at 1753 Bar Avenue, right up from Kate and Aaron. I have to say that most everybody on my street has a fire pit, like they were saying, and I don't have, we haven't had any major problems. I mean, we live close by. Generally, there might be, I could probably count on both hands how many fires in our neighborhood per year. Like, there might be five to eight a year, tops, in our neighborhood, and everybody is controlled with it. And it's, but like, I would like to say currently, I'm not sure everybody knows, but right now it's illegal to burn at all in Crafton. So this ordinance that they're proposing would make it allowable with different parameters. So I am in favor of this. I think this is great. I think the suggestions that you made about the air quality, I think the suggestions you made were really good, especially with air quality and maybe age and stuff like that. Those are good things that could affect. And that's all, I think, yeah.
Can I say something that, you said that it's not, it hasn't been legal to burn in Crafton. Well, for two years, it has been.
We're going to have our fire chief...
I'm just saying, the ordinance now is no burning. The old ordinance was like...
Our fire chief is going to speak to that as well, when he's, he's going to speak afterward. Okay, then we can move on to Susan and Derek. Are you going to do the 17?
Thanks, Derek.
Because people want to do it. Hold on one second. You ready?
Okay.
Ready?
Derek, you've lived at 92 South Ludbrook for 22 years.
South Ludbrook?
Yeah. I'm in, we're in favor of the ordinance with controls, which is great, and establishing parameters, and I think reinforcing them diligently. I have a neighbor, he likes to burn leaves, and sometimes the smell wafts up the alley throughout the neighborhood, and I'd like to see enforcement of that. And one is a safety factor, he doesn't want to burn down his neighbor's house, but people should be educated. I think, I'm not sure if the fire chief's going to talk about, but there should be some kind of literature handed around through the fire department. It's educating the public as well. It's not just saying, okay, don't burn here, the parameters, but it's handling fire, it's understanding it. We've camped for years, I have an understanding of fire, you put out the ashes, you use water, there's certain methodology involved. So I think that should be a big part of that. And I agree with a lot of the things that have been said, the age, as far as time of night, sometimes we have get togethers with friends, and it goes till 12, 1:00 in the morning, but it's controlled, and we haven't had any problems with the neighbors. So I think that should be left out to the discretion of the individuals, and if there's a complaint, then the police should enforce that. So I'm in favor of the ordinance, and one of the main things I'm concerned about is the handling of the ashes. What do we do? Is there a place that could be created for a dumping of the ashes? Careless people might throw it somewhere where it's going to start a fire, so maybe this can be all part of our fire control situation. So I'm in favor of it with controls.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Mike?
I'm not sure exactly where, what you want, but currently, she was right, there is no...
You can introduce yourself, just in case.
Mike Brown, I'm the fire chief in Crafton. Right now, currently, the ordinance says there is no burning in Crafton. So all the burning that does go on is actually against the violation of the ordinance. Allegheny County changed about a year ago to other open burning regulations, and they're allow burning in certain situations. As this gentleman said, he did his research, a lot of those. Our ordinance in some respects is a little less stringent than what the county has allowed for proposed ordinance. Or the draft proposed ordinance. I would like to see it follow the county a little bit more, put a little, couple more stipulations. Age is one good requirement, minimum of 18 years old, you're in a dollar at that point, so that should be a minimum. Time limits of burning, I know that somebody mentioned at 11 o'clock, or burning till 1:00. There should be some type of regulation on the hours of burning. Sometimes people let them burn, they may go back in the house at night, not knowing what's going on, you know, things can happen. And being that it's late at night, sometimes, you know, an ember gets lost, or, you know, brush fires start, or bush dead bush. Now there's problems that precipitate because it's late and time's not on our side. The other thing I've...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If I, if we put a time limit and said 9:00 versus, say, midnight, right? You could still just go in the house at 9:00 and still knock out those embers. So maybe time...
Yeah, our thought was, if you're out, yeah, if you're, if you put midnight on it, there's not as many people hopping out the neighborhoods or doing things.
Oh, I see.
If something does happen, you're now delaying any response or any, you know, rational decision at that point. So, you know, it's some type of amicable timeframe, I think, warranted. Another idea we had is some type of smoke or spark arrest, or some type of ember arrest. Currently, there's none required, Allegheny County doesn't really mention it, but...
Can you explain that?
It's the cage on top of the fire. It's the mesh that goes on top. A chain link fence. Yes, some type of screen. A chain link fence isn't appropriate. We've gone to calls in Crafton, you've had the chain link fence on top, that's not the proper smoke arrest. Yes, the whole just two things. So I think a further definition of those types of things would be conducive to a better ordinance and better draft ordinance for the residents. No burning in the front yards. A lot of times, that's, you know, it could be a problem. There has been a lot of complaints, those types of things. So I think if you keep it in the backyard, I like the idea, the county does say 15 feet off of a property. I think if you gauge it 15 feet from all property boundaries, that's appropriate. If we define the size, space, cubic feet of the fire, that would, you know, be appropriate. We're looking for recreational burns. We're not looking for wildfires or things like that. These are for recreational purposes. And I think that that gets lost, you know, the process of having a fire and having some neighbors over, you know, and communicating gets lost with having these big fires, and things, the bigger the better. And it's just the ambiance of having that fire. And again, I agree, it should be dead wood, dried wood, those types of things, there should be paramount, non-painted woods, no garbage, no trash, nothing that's to be collected by the refug company. That's, that's all good.
Do you have any statistics that you can share with us regarding fires?
Before...
Literally, from indoor or outdoor burning?
Indoor burning, we've seen a lot, that's come up with the new wood pellet stoves, about having proper ducting and those types of things. Outdoor fires, little brush fires, they're more of a nuisance. We do get a lot of nuisance smoking area calls, those types of things. It was, it was much greater years ago, when there was absolutely no burning, and that was the way we went. But over the past five, seven years, it's been a little more relaxed, so the people's awareness has been relaxed, so we haven't had as many issues with that. A lot of times, the Crafton police do check them out, we'll get dispatch, they'll check them out just regardless of that. So it hasn't been an extreme problem, but, you know, we just want to keep it to a recreational fire. The other thing is the permit stage, the permitting, records nightmare. I don't, there's hundreds of pits now that are not recorded anywhere. And I don't believe that by issuing a permit, you're going to be able to capture the majority of those open pits now, or those chimneys or fire pits. So although it is a great idea to try to keep track of who has those, it's literally going to be impossible to track them. Somebody goes to the store, goes to Lowe's, they see a fire pit that looks great in the backyard, let's purchase, nobody thinks about the permit, the regulations for it, and then it continues.
Can you have a discussion with your team and see what you would be willing to do to help us educate our residents regarding what happens, whether it's adopted or not adopted?
Yes. And counties, somebody, I think you had, thorough burning regulations through the county. So, uh, it hasn't been an extreme problem, um, but you know, we just want to keep it to a recreational fire. The other thing is the permit stage, the permitting, um, records nightmare. I don't think, there's hundreds of pits now that are not recorded anywhere. And I don't believe that by issuing a permit, you're going to be able to capture the majority of those open pits now or those chimney or fire pits. So it, although it is a great idea to try to keep track of who has those, it's literally going to be impossible to track them. Somebody goes to the store, goes to Lowe's, they see a fire pit that looks great in the backyard, lets purchase, nobody thinks about the permit, the regulations for it, and then it continues.
Can you have a discussion with your team and see what you would be willing to, to help us educate our residents regarding what happens, whether it's adopted or not adopted?
Yes. And, and the county's, uh, somebody, I think you had, thorough burning regulations through the county is very well done and they do explain a lot of those things and rules and regulations, but we will, you know, put something together and help you distribute through your email list or whatever means you have.
Put on marquees, something. Do any members of council have questions for the fire chief? I'm sorry?
There's another person on.
Is that for um, the regular meeting?
Well, it says for the regular meeting.
Oh, well, it says bar, I said, there, if you want to pass this.
Thank you.
I meant to ask the fire chief a question.
Did you have a question for the fire chief?
Soon as he's done.
Michael. We have a question, one question.
I just had a question, Mr. Crown. As far as the ashes, is there something in the future, like, I don't know?
No, I mean, it would be for us to come up with something to do with the ashes would be impossible. I would think that in the ordinance, you can have a disposal policy or disposal guideline for the ordinance of the ashes, use the ashes. You know, uh, generally accepted principles, you know, let them, you know, expire, water them down and then find a good disposal point for them. It's probably right. We don't want you taking the hot ashes, dump them over hillside, those types of things, but yeah.
Okay, so we will work closely with the fire department then. Uh, we do have one more person that wanted to um, speak regarding fire. This meeting does end at seven fifteen. I was hoping that we would be able to make amendments to the current draft and potentially vote on, at our seven fifteen meeting. But if that doesn't happen, then we will further discuss it at our next meeting and potentially vote at our next meeting, which would be what? The...
Twenty-fifth.
Does that count? Oh, the twenty-fifth. Okay, so we have Rachel.
My name is Rachel Engle. I live, I live at Timolin Street, um...
Somebody got the three minutes? I'm so sorry.
I got it, I got it.
I'll be, I'll be...
It's okay.
Uh, I just want to say I'm in favor of the ordinance or the controlled burning. I love the, or agree with the, the air quality action days. Um, I do think we should be mindful of the time, but it would be, I think nine o'clock might be a little bit short. Sometimes I like to sit outside quietly and enjoy a quiet evening with me and my husband, sitting, listening to nature's and sounds with the fire really low burning. Then we sit outside with a cup of coffee. So, um, considering finding, I guess, a happy medium between something that is reasonable, not really late, maybe somewhere between the hours of nine and midnight. It sounds like it might be nice somewhat to fall in between. Um, but overall, I'm in favor of the ordinance. I think you guys have um, done a lot of work since I was here the last time in trying to consider um, pers, different perspectives and trying your best to, I think, make everyone ha, as happy as they can. We're just trying to find a happy, a happy medium, so.
Thank you. Who wants to go first with their amendments to the potential draft? David.
Uh, well, you know, taking into consideration what the public has uh, has said and looking at the ordinance. Uh, I thought that we could be more specific uh, as far as from safety perspective, on the size, on, on the position in the backyard, as far as how close it is to a neighbor's property. I spoke with the ordinance officer, Dave Morgan, and he basically would like as much substance in the ordinance to, for any person of authority to be able to walk up to a situation that seems unsafe and be able to say, you know, you need to shut this down because in our ordinance, it says this, this, and this. You're not following the regulations within the ordinance. So, um, you're going to have to hit this particular fire out. The other thing is for, let's say there is a neighbor that, two neighbors do not get along and someone is doing the right thing, they're doing the right kind of fire, using the right kind of wood, it's the right size, or just wanting to enjoy you, you know, the outdoors with, with a controlled fire. And the neighbor complains, you know, this is too, you know, I don't like that fire, just because they don't like that particular neighbor. At least they'll give the opportunity for the neighbor that wants to have a fire to defend themselves, whether it goes to the magistrate or whatever, saying, I was doing, you know, I was pro, pro, using the proper wood, it's a proper size. Just for them to have an opportunity to say that they were following the regulations and, and it's safe. So I'm not sure, you know, how specific, you know, the amendments should be. I'm, I'm not a fire expert.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add? What amendments then would you make based on what he said?
What, what specific?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with defining size, finding height, being fifteen or whatever the width is away from the others, um, what can and can't be burned.
I, I was gonna say, the, an amendment, an additional wording to our amendment is the county's ordinance shall supersede the borough's regulations when county's ordinance is more restrictive. And then, so with that, we'd be adopting the fifteen feet from the dwelling and property line. Uh, does, does the county cover the type of fuel? If, if so, clean bor, clean burning. Age of the eighteen plus, width, no more than three feet. DUP, EPA air action. Permit fee, that's, that's actually, so all the bug, uh, takes care of that. And then I think we're on our own to set permit fee. Time restriction, I don't believe the county regulates time. Uh, ember, restor, fire, they, they, they don't look, but we should. And then we can, we hadn't really talked about ash disposal policy. I thought that was more of a common sense thing, but maybe we need to outline common sense on that. Time restriction, just my personal opinion, I'd like to see something that would say eleven P M. I think that would be...
It's not even dark till nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but the fire...
No delay, no delay.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, you're right. Sorry.
It's okay. We know what they feel.
So...
I'm voting, I, I want longer, so.
So, th- those are, those are...
Eleven's fine. Go ahead.
So, so those are, those are my comments. I think we can achieve one through five by s, with that simple sentence. Like, it's, you know, county's ordinance shall supersede the borough's regulations when county's ordinance is more restrictive. And then we do, we just talked about permit fees and...
We may have to do that.
Yeah.
I, I just uh, wanted to ask or to kind of uh, reiterate based on a couple of the comments that we heard tonight. To just double check that our, our wording, which I know is in there, about the inside burning and according to the manufacturer's recommendations, because I...
Based on what they're putting in there?
Right, yeah, because I, I'm concerned that, um, I think our wording is okay, but when, whatever, right, because I think the custom people who are, you know, trying to do alternate uh, fuel burning uh, to, to the recommendations and there seems to be some concern that they might be in danger of having someone shut them down because someone else has a fire pit.
Right, right.
So, you know, I, I think we have it. I just been wondering whether we needed a little more specific, or did we just need to leave it out there?
It is, last meeting, we did just kind of like cross one thing out and added something, so maybe, maybe we can relook at that too. Because I, I, like I had said before, I would hate to stop someone from, if that's their means of heat in their home. But if they're not doing it properly, not only are, are others in danger, but they are in danger as well and I don't want to see them in danger. So I can't imagine that the manufacturer's directions would tell them that they can burn cabinets in their wood burning. This side, do we have anything that you want to add?
It's basically...
Marshall?
Don't get any of the county, the county has it, you know, the size, middle and...
Okay, which is what we, okay, we covered it there. Alice?
I like the age. I would like to see the age be put in there.
Okay.
I think that's necessary because I have seen younger kids that have been playing around with it. It's not a good situation. I like the um, air quality control with EPA is, I, I think that that would be good. And I like the screening that, uh, they've spoken of. If there is, because it seems as though those are readily available.
Some of them come with it.
If it comes with it, right.
Yes.
But those that don't have it, I think they should actually... I'm certain we have that in there.
Thank you. Fred?
I, I would like to see something closer to the county's, um, you know, be put in there, the ozone action days, that has to be in there.
Do we know, how, other than going to look for it, I mean, is it somewhere just all the time? Like, is it on your...
They tell you on the weather.
On your TV?
Weather.
Ozone action.
Weather and no... It'll be on at all, just like if you're getting ice or something.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I'm a sun lover, so.
Okay. So on page one, under definitions, fire pit. I think we need to add those metal uh, little dishes that they sell.
I, I, okay.
Cause they're not, they're not described there.
They're not specifically described, but we could definitely add that verbiage if that's what you wanted to see.
On page five, there are penalties. Where it says, in paragraph A, where it says district justice, that probably should be changed to magisterial district justice. That's the proper name for the magistrate over there in Crafton. And under that same paragraph, um, that, it says the subject subject to payment of a fine, if not less than three hundred dollars. Not more than a thousand dollars. In, in the borough code, uh, which is uh, seventeen oh two, of two thousand and eleven, on page four eighty-seven, it requires us to that three hundred dollars should not be in there. It, it should read that the fine would not exceed a thousand dollars. Uh, the three hundred dollar part should be totally taken out. And, and that's required by borough code.
Okay.
The other part that we...
Do you have a copy? Is that, are you looking at a copy?
Yes. Uh, so that's House Bill seventeen oh two of two thousand and eleven. And the imprisonment, uh, part of it should stay in there because uh, it is also part of the borough code. And, and, you know, this, these are the, the penalties that we're supposed to follow uh, when adopting an ordinance reference to uh, housing, property maintenance, health, fire, public safety, parking, blah, blah, blah.
So this would then change to the payment of a fine of not more than, or up to
Thousand dollars.
More than one thousand dollars. That then gives the magistrate the...
The tools that he needs to work with this.
Okay.
But it's in the borough paragraph. It's something that we should be doing anyway.
Okay.
And of course, leave the imprisonment thing in there. Ozone action. The hours, you know, as far as personally, I think it should be one o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the morning. I, you know. That's just my personal opinion, but...
We are, it's time a little bit past seven fifteen, so do you have anything additional that you're, can you wrap it up? Sorry. Okay. Are we ready to do it then? So, meeting is adjourned and we'll move on to our regularly scheduled program. Thank you.